Excuse me, regular council meeting to order. First we have the invocation, my councilmember Jeffrey Darby and a pledge of allegiance by our councilmember Don Williams. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Holy Father, we give you praise, we give you thanksgiving for this day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord God, for your goodness and for your kindness in our lives. We pray, O Father, for every person who is here. We ask that you bless them, bless their families. We thank you for those who serve others. We ask that you give us direction to do the things that benefit those we serve in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Let's face the flag, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Council, in accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up with for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president pro tem barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by majority count vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked at councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
Phil, do we have any ceremonial matters?
No, sir.
Counsel, could we get a motion to approve today's agenda?
Counsel, we have a request for one add-on.
Okay.
It's gonna be number five under new business, adopt a resolution to change the name of City Hall Drive to Hutchinson Drive, and that's at the request of Chief Haugen. They wanted to make the presentation to the family before it was public.
I make the motion, we approve the agenda with the addition.
Second. Any question from the council? I mean, from the council? Any questions from the audience?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. My comment about the agenda is that the agenda doesn't really give the public the benefit of the discourse related to the advice that you guys, you gentlemen, have received in relation to the term limits proposition that's being discussed later, and I'll explain that in a second. If you do not pass the resolution to meet the bond commission deadline, not only are you violating your charter, but you may be subject to other violations. Basically, LARS 14134A1 describes additional liabilities for malfeasance of office if you that are committed when a public officer fails to perform any duty that's lawfully responsible for. So not only are you having to consider your responsibilities under the charter, but there are implications about your constituent civil voter and First Amendment rights to petition their government and then get to vote accordingly. So I just wish that you would give Mr. Jacobs an opportunity to discuss the advice that he's given to you so that the public knows what the implications are. I hope, I hope you consider that during this agenda and make this a more liberal discussion so that we actually know what you're considering. I hope Mr. Jacobs does get an opportunity before the public even gets to comment. I think that would be good for the public.
Thank you.
In light of its comments, which I'm not sure what they had to do with the agenda item, but Chief, would you come up, please, and explain the purpose of the?
Absolutely, I'd be honored. So in reference to the change of the street sign, this past Sunday, August the 11th, was the 20-year mark of Officer Trey Hutchison that was killed in the line of duty in Bossier City. We did a memorial service at the police station. Appreciate the ones that were able to make it, presented a lot of different things to the family, but one of, one of which was change of City Hall Drive over to Hutchison Drive. I can't describe to you the amount of emotion that went on in that room whenever we did that. It was huge. So I appreciate y'all, I appreciate y'all supporting that, and look forward to it physically being up there. It's gonna be awesome.
Chief, could you explain the, what the library's address is gonna be? Because I thought that was really touching.
So the, in that ordinance today, we were requesting to change the block number to 7200, and then, I can't take credit for that, Ms. Amanda, Ms. Carol, they've been working with the parish, with the library, and we will request for the library to take the address of 7204, which is specifically Trey's Bossier City Police Department badge number when he was employed with us. Be very special.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Chief.
Alright, counsel, do we approve the agenda yet?
We have to vote on the amendment.
Resolution, add a resolution? Or did you want both of them together? I don't know that we can do both of them together. I don't think so, I think we just.
No, we're, I made the motion that we add the amendment.
Yes, sir. And I have a second for Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Make the motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Any questions? Counsel, please vote. I've got some bids.
The minutes.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July 30th, 2024 regular council meeting in the Spencer's reading.
Second. We got a second? Second. Okay. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Bids, witness opening of seal bids for bid number 795-2024, 23, 234, Westerfield Street, demolition.
Good afternoon, counsel, Mayor Chandler. We're opening the bids today for the demolition of the structure at 234 Westerfield Street. There were no addendums on the project. The administrative court recommended the demolition of the structure as soon as legally possible at the June 11th meeting. Her bid is for $26,350, and she has a check as her bid security.
What was the amount again?
The next bid is from First Priority Environmental. They have their bid bond, and the amount of their bid is $29,360. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids, please.
So move. Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, girls. Please cast your vote.
hearings and actions on unfinished business, adopting ordinance to amend the 2024 water fund budget, final reading.
So move. Second. Is there any question from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance to contract diligent services to provide video streaming and automated live captioning services to the city of Bossier City, final reading.
So move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Phil, after we approve this, how long will it take them to get started on this?
We have to do the whole process with the, it has to go through the bid process, I mean, through the advertisement process, and so it won't advertise until next Wednesday, and it's 10 days, next Wednesday, from next Wednesday, it's 10 days, and then they can start.
Okay, thank you. Alright, counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance to declare the completion of the Vardo Lane Sewer Line project, including change order number one, in the amount of $24,847.80, and to appropriate an additional $21,047.80 from Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund to complete the project, final reading.
So move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance to repeal ordinance number 154 of 2023, final reading.
So move. Do we have any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement. I was absent two weeks ago when this was introduced. It is my belief that we don't have the power nor the authority to dissolve the Charter Commission once it was voted on and approved and established by the council. Otherwise, there would be no purpose in the Charter Commission unless they agreed with the City Council in what we wanted to do, and that is specifically prohibited, that we shall interfere or alter what, whether the 18 months expires or they submit changes to the charter as proposed to go to the voter. So I believe that those are the only two ways that the Charter Commission can be ended.
Counsel, any comments?
Do you have opinion on that, Mr. Jacobs?
Well, again, we're in uncharted territory, and the, you know, in, in any action, of course, is always, could be subject to a legal challenge if the Charter Commission was enacted by statute, you know, pursuing. It all depends on how the charter is interpreted and, you know, also in accordance with, you know, state law, and also, you know, there's, you know, some attorney generals, there is an attorney general's opinion on it, and there's, and I, and there is some case law on it. Again, we're kind of in uncharted territory here, so the opinion really is, is, I don't know. I, I, I'm just gonna be honest with you. It, 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 it's an issue of first impression, and it would have to be ruled on by a court if it were so challenged. So it could be the subject of litigation, it could be the subject of challenge. It's very difficult for me to express an opinion on something that, you know, is, is kind of an issue of first impression for the city of Bossier City. So that's, you know, sort of the best I can do, you know, at this time.
Can I, I guess ask one further question to you, Mr. Jacobs? I mean, what, what is your professional opinion? Do you think that we need to put this on hold because the last thing that the city needs right now is another lawsuit, that we need to spend money on, on another lawsuit? That, that is something that we do not need to do. We don't, we, we could spend money on so much more better stuff than another lawsuit. So what, what is your professional opinion on guiding us on what we should do at this point?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, and, and again, I know there are differing opinions on different council members, the mayor who proposed the ordinance, but the, the best advice I could probably give at this particular time, if you could give me another two weeks to research it, I'll be happy to try to provide an opinion to the City Council, but I would caution the City Council and the mayor and the members of the audience that, again, we're sort of dealing with an issue of first impression. I don't think there's, I didn't want to.
No, no, go ahead.
I think there's any huge rush, especially considering the potential, as you pointed out, Mr. Hammond, for litigation. This is something that's gonna take time. It's my opinion, we should take this off the agenda. It's sending mixed message to the existing Charter Commem- Commission members, which I see Mr. Jeter out in the audience and Mr. Cheatham, there's, they have spent an enormous amount of time and energy, and they've come a long way. I think they have, they're doing their due diligence, and we should allow them to proceed. It specifically states, and I think you'd agree with this, Mr. Jacobs, that we are not to interfere with the Charter Commission's work in any shape, form, or fashion. The, that's, you, you go to section 20, 21 of the charter, and it sets up a process by which the Charter Commission is established, it sets forth certain deadlines, it does not address the dissolution of the Charter Commission itself. So however, it does seem to give a deadline or a time period of 18 months for the commission to make whatever recommendations they feel are proper or that pass by majority vote to the City Council. If you're asking, as Mr. Hammond's did, in the interest of caution, then I'm always gonna be overly cautious, and I would, you know, again, that's, we do have areas of conflict, you know, between the council, you know, and certain people come down on certain sides of this, and in the interest of caution, it would probably be the best bet to, again, to, to go ahead and, and do a little bit further research, and I'll give the best opinion that I possibly can, you know, for that.
Yeah, and I guess going back to the issue at hand is, it's sending mixed signals to the existing Charter Commission members that are we gonna continue or not? If we, I think it's imperative we send a message, message by voting this down and say, we're doing this because we believe in the mission that you have done and that you're going to accomplish. There's a reason that we did that, and it's because of the voters. There needs to be changes to the charter, and those should be put before the voters.
So, again, I think as far as sending a clear message to the Charter Commem- Commission members, us voting this down and saying, y'all, please proceed, and then we'll put that before the voters. I think that was the intent, so thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, Mr. Mayor, what, what was your intention when you asked the repeal of this ordinance?
Thank you for asking that, Mr. Darby. They had a meeting last, the last meeting they had went for four hours, and I think they only went to three, three different items in the agenda, and I don't even think they even got to vote on, to approve the minutes already. It was, it was so disarranged and so, I didn't like the way it was making the city look. And I asked my two guys that I put on the commission how they felt about that, and the reason why I wanted to disband that and start all over is to start off anew, because it was just going down a wrong road, I believe, and it wasn't making the city look, you know, the potential that Bossier City is. And they went four hours, and they didn't get nothing accomplished. And they've done that over and over and over again, so if they do that again on the next meetings, it's gonna be the same way. So that's up to you guys, y'all vote.
So when you say start over, are you talking about a, a new commission?
I, that, yes, sir.
You are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When, when is the, the 18 months expiration date? Do you know, Mr. McGraw?
I think Mr. Ray probably knows when the 18 months is up.
It may be June.
18 months from two or three months ago, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. I, I, I think from my memory, the first meeting was in late January, but I think the clock would have started in December when the ordinance was, was first passed, but that's catching me cold from memory. So whatever 18 months is from December of 2023, so June of 2025, maybe May of 2025, I'd have to look for an exact date, but.
Okay, so we got a little ways to go, if it continues.
Time-wise, yes, yes, there's, there's still time in the 18 months, if that's the question.
Okay, but it's your desire, Mayor, to dissolve the commission today?
If y'all vote for it, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I wanna say something, and I'm, I'm gonna say it to you, Mr. Jeter, but I'm not blaming you, okay? I'm just, and Mr. Jeter been here too. You know, it's, this is just my opinion, it's, it's kinda sad, we, we put him in this position of running a meeting, and I think some of the people that came to speak took advantage of, of people that didn't know, hadn't run a meeting before, and I'm not criticizing no one, but it, it did three hours or four hours because I was here, and again, they didn't even get a chance to, to get to adopt the agenda because we had so many speakers. You know, if you, if you adopt the City Council rules, we only have five speakers, three minutes, you're done, you know? They had probably 20 that night. So, you know, you have to, you have to learn how to run a meeting, and I think that was the biggest problem. But again, I, I don't think we need to dissolve it, we need to get it back going and see, see what else we can do. And that's just a, you know, Mr. Jeter, again, not blaming you, not because you're here, just, just my opinion.
Could I ask a question, Mr. President? Mr. Jeter, would you, would you mind coming up? Let me ask you a question, please. And if, if y'all don't mind, I would not like to put the three minutes on, on Mr. Jeter on this. Where, where, where do y'all stand right now?
Okay, let me identify myself, Lee A. Jeter, Senior 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112.
With all due respect, excuse me, we can't alter.
Okay, that's fine, we, you put the three minutes, alright, on that, okay, that's fine, I think you can do it within the three.
I mean, I just wanted to point that out.
We have not had a meeting since the last meeting, and we have not had a meeting because we were waiting on this body to decide on the proposal that the mayor put forth regards to this particular council, as far as regards to whether that Charter Commission is gonna be disbanded or not. When we began the process of reviewing the charter, it was our understanding that we were supposed to review the charter in its entirety, and also believe that there are some things on certain issues that divided the Charter Commission. We voted on those issues earlier in the process, and those issues was passed. Since that issue, we've had two resignations to the charter, and it's my understanding that in order for us to have a legally binding meeting to move forward, those two individuals have to be replaced. We have not taken the process to relate, replace those two individuals, for the simple matter is, not knowing whether the charter was gonna move forward or not, you don't want individuals submitting a resume or bio to serve on a, a body, and that body is gonna be dissolved. Whether we can move forward really depends on whether we're gonna set aside our personal agendas, in my opinion, and just vote on those issues that we need to vote on. And I have submitted to the charter that we not discuss the one issue that is diversity to the charter, and that is that issue of term limits. I suggested that since the voters have signed a petition and have submitted a petition to this body, that we do the work of the charter minus any issue of term limits, and once that issue is sent to the voters and the voters decide, then we place that issue in the charter as the voters of the city of Bossier City have voted upon. And that way, we can move on with those other issues that are important to the charter. We know we've got issues with IT, we've got other issues in the charter that are very, very important, but it seems to be one issue, and that is the issue of term limits, that has divided everybody and has caused this charter to be in disarray. After petition that the citizens of Bossier City have submitted to this council, go forth and the council and the citizens of Bossier City are allowed to determine the outcome of that petition, then our business would be to insert into that charter, word for word, whatever is approved or disapproved. If the citizens vote down term limits in the charter, there would be no term limits. If the citizens vote for term limits, then we would put it in the charter as it has been meant and approved by the citizens of, of Bossier City, and that's where we at. That one issue has been dividing this, this Charter Commission, is, which is the same issue I think this council faces right now.
So y'all have had two people that have resigned, how, how do we go about do, does this council, whoever appointed that person to the charter, do they get to pick another person, or is that taken on by the Charter Commission?
It has been my understanding from what we've reviewed with legal counsel, that the charter has to replace those two individuals and not the council. And based on the discussion from the public and the information that we had at the town hall, it has been my position that we should replace those two individuals with someone that represents the districts in which they came from, and that has been my position. I will stand by that position because that was one of the constants that we faced when we had our town hall meetings, that several citizens feel like they did not have someone from their district to represent them. And so if we're gonna replace those people, it is my position, they should come from those, that district, but also we have to get information to be able to put on agenda to be able to identify those individuals that we're gonna consider, because it's gotta be considered by the council, I mean by the Charter Commission, I'm sorry.
Even though it doesn't say that in the charter, they have to be from that district, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Right. Because it's, it's my understanding, once the commission was formed, then this council was supposed to be hands-off.
Exactly, all we do is our point, our thing, and we're done.
Right.
Exactly.
That, that is my understanding, unless we get a legal opinion to the contrary.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I can speak to this, the chapter 21 of the charter, which does deal with the Charter Commission and amendments to the charter, does not contain a section or any type of provision dealing with resignation of a member, death, incompetency, things no longer able to serve, and therefore, you rely back on state law in Title 33, which basically says that the, that the body itself would have to adopt rules of procedure in order to replace those members.
But they gotta get five people there first?
They have to have a quorum. The Charter Commission, it says, shall consist of nine members, and so a, a quorum would, 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 would consist of five members. I believe that's settled.
To put the two new members on.
Correct.
So let, make, make that clear. It only takes five to put two on, not seven.
Correct, it takes a majority of the Charter Commission.
So then basically what we're sitting here talking about is kind of a moot point because we're not supposed to have any interference in this once the Charter Commission is formed and moved on, so.
Well.
I'm not a lawyer.
Well. Well, if you, i- i- I, I think that's the issue before with the mayor's proposed ordinance, is that, you know, he's asking that the charter commission, that the ordinance that established it be repealed, and then go through the process of establishing another charter commission. But once that charter commission is formed, then the city council is out of the picture, so to speak, until such a time is that charter commission, within those prescribed deadlines, makes recommendations to the council to put those, to put the amended charter as a whole on a referendum to be voted upon by the public.
So Charlie, you're saying if we form another charter commission, will we, will the same five stay on there, or we all have to appoint someone else, if it's a whole new commission?
There's, there's nothing that prescribes, that I'm aware of, that prescribes from reappointing those, those same members that were appointed in, in the first time.
If they wanna be on there again.
If they wanna be on there, if they choose to serve.
Yeah.
That, Mr. President, may be the problem, in that because of the disarray of the commission and the various things that have occurred, finding someone that is willing to give their time, their energy and their effort to serve on this body. So when the mayor proposed terminating this body, that was one of the considerations that I put forth. Are we gonna find citizens in the city of Bossier that are willing to give up their time and energy to serve this body for the remainder of the term without any preconceived agendas? And I just honestly can't answer that at this time.
Yeah, it's, it's, once you sit somebody down, or they, or they're seeing the meeting, and they understand how, how much time it will take, because y'all was there three or four hours, you know, a couple nights, it's, that's gonna be the problem, you know? Hopefully it's not, but we'll see what happens.
Again, that's not up to us.
Exactly, it's not up to us.
It's.
We're just here to vote whether we're gonna keep it or not, and.
And with that being said, I'd like to call for a question.
Do we get a second on the vote? Hold on, Chris, we gotta get, then you, second, okay.
Mr. President, you done?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Jeter, appreciate it.
Call for the question.
There needs to be a two-thirds majority vote to call for the question, so I'll wait for that vote.
Call for the question, that ends debate.
Is that agreed, Council?
You wanna do it by voice, or do you wanna do it on the computer?
I've got it on the computer, if you want, I just talked to.
Yeah, well, wait a minute, Chris, where did you say?
It has to call for the question, it has to be a two-thirds majority.
And we got a second, so we need to vote.
Yeah.
That stops the debate.
So you're gonna put it on the screen, vote, all right.
All right, Council, please cast your vote.
Motion fails. He says carry, but it's, it's, it's backwards, because.
You what?
It's backwards, the, the, it's, the computer set up for two thirds, I mean, set up for.
Majority.
Majority. And you have to have two-thirds majority for this to pass, so there would have been, needed to be five votes, four calling for the question, and then two votes against.
Okay, so this is vote for, call for the question, so we need to vote again? Is that what you're saying?
If you didn't understand it, I mean, can we vote again, or do we need to?
You, you had a vote in front of you that was calling for the question only. As Mr. Smith pointed out, and Ms. McGraw pointed out, that requires a two, a, a two-thirds majority vote, which would be five out of seven. So if anybody else wishes to speak on that, calling for the end of debate and calling for a vote, then they're now free to do so, because the calling for the question itself did not pass. At the end of debate, you know, pursuant to the regular city council rules, then, then, then you still have to vote on the second reading of the repeal ordinance in front of you.
But we can still have discussion.
Correct.
So we're still in a discussion period, but nothing stops anyone from calling for the question again.
Yeah, all right, Mr. Chris, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
All I, all I wanted to say, and is why I'm in favor of this, this ordinance, is this charter commission specifically for me personally has gotten very personal. I'm not on the charter commission, and I can only assume it's because of one particular issue that Mr. Jeter referenced. You know, I've, somebody, maybe it's somebody in this audience, maybe it's somebody sitting up here, maybe it's somebody on the charter commission. Somebody filed an ethics complaint against me with the state board, Louisiana State Board of Ethics, based on my appointment to the charter commission. That appointment was not done in malice, it was approved by the city attorney's office, it was frankly approved by all seven of us, twice. But I can only assume that because of one particular issue, they thought that filing an ethics complaint would be a, a quick, easy way to rid my voice on the charter commission. I've been attacked personally via email and text and social media. There've been other, other thing, other attacks against me as it relates to involvement with the charter commission. This has gotten, this has gotten way too political over one singular issue. And it is uncalled for, it is unbecoming of whoever is behind it. And frankly, this charter commission needs to end, because it is getting nowhere fast. And if, and if we are afraid over litigation over this, then there are other things that we can be afraid over litigation on. But I think that this charter commission is not serving its intended purpose. And that is to look at the issues that face Bossier City today, how we can address those issues, how we can move forward and better our city. We're not doing that, we're, we're not bettering our city through this charter commission. I thought when it started, we would, I had high hopes. I'd, I'd been wanting to do a charter commission since the day I walked in these doors. But all I've seen is personal attacks against people, and it's not just me, there are, there are other people that are being personally attacked over their position, either for or against a certain item. It's unbecoming, and we need to be the leaders that Bossier City elected us to be and say that today, we're gonna make that stop. So that is why I will be voting in favor of the mayor's ordinance.
Chris, I agree with almost everything you said, but I think, again, my opinion, nobody should be attacking anybody over the charter commission, okay? I do think we need to go on and try to get something accomplished, if it's possible. And then, if it's not possible, you know, Mr. Jeter, whoever's gonna be president, just quit coming, they can all quit coming and not, not do it. I mean, I hope that don't happen, because we need to, we need to get on the charter. Anyway, again, that's my opinion. Is there any other questions?
Well, for the very reason that Mr. Smith said that he feels as though this, that's an opinion of someone on the city council. And if I'm not mistaken, we have nothing to do with what the charter commission is doing, regardless of whether we agree or disagree.
That's true.
And in that was my original debate and argument was that, so going forward, let's say there's another charter commission, and we get nine people, and then a group of us don't like it, four people on this council, we'll disband it again. I mean, there would be no purpose to the charter commission if we had that kind of power and authority. And I'm just talking about playing this out. I mean, unless they agree with our mission, or a majority of these people sitting up here, they might as well never even get together, because it, it's not gonna happen. You can see that happening right now. Somebody, a, a group of people, elected officials, don't like what's going on, and they wanna disband it. And that could happen over and over and over again. I don't think that's in the intent of the charter commission. It is so they can act independently and be a representative body of the voters and the citizenry of Bossier City. So that's my two cents again.
You're sticking to it, huh? Is there any other, any other comments? Mr. Jeter? Make it, do you three minutes, and we'll be done, huh? Yes, sir.
Lee A. Jeter, Senior 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7/11/12. Mr. President, the issue that I have at this point is Councilman Smith made a statement about an ethics complaint that was submitted by his appointment to the charter commission, which was the, one of the individuals that has resigned. So the question that has come before us is, if we're replacing individuals on a charter, because of that ethic complaint that could possibly lead to litigation, we're gonna have to start all the way over from day one to bring two new people on the charter commission to discuss everything, because from what I understand it, if that ethical complaint goes through, then everything that we've done up until the resignation of that individual may be null and void, it may be subject to litigation. We don't have anyone representing us, anyone giving us lot, legal guidance on this particular issue, but that is a real concern for us moving forward, is we, we can't pick up where we left off because of the possible ethic complaint, which means we've gotta go back to square one, to start everything over. And, and we, we don't seem to have any guidance in that direction. Thank you.
I know, Richard, and I'm not throwing it on your ear, Richard, you was here at the charter meetings, I mean, to give them guidance, I mean, they could ask you for it, I guess, or they could, right now, ask both y'all after the meeting or whenever, but I still think we need to move forward with it, just. Is there any more comments?
I, I, I can make a comment, speaking to the issue that Mr. Jeter raised. And again, you're trying to predict an action of a body, which is the, for lack of, you know, the Louisiana Board of Ethics, they're gonna have to rule on that complaint. If the possible outcome, if they do find some type of ethical violation, one of the remedies that they can impose is that if there was an appointment that was in violation of the ethics code, then any vote in which that person took place, who was the subject of that violation, is null and void. And so, again, you're, Mr. Jeter is correct, that is a possible, that is a possible imposition by the ethics board, you know, depending on what ruling they make. They would have to find an ethics violation, and then they would, then they would enact a remedy for that violation. And one of those possible remedies, again, you get into a lot of this hypothetical, if this happens, then if that happens, then, you know, what would be the remedy? And there would be a possible remedy to say, if this person was in fact appointed in violation of the, you know, of the Louisiana Code of Ethics, that any action, you know, that he participated in would be then null and void.
Well, we know, we know the vote happened on many occasions, and that we know, I know Chris didn't appoint somebody and knew it was an ethics violation. I mean, I, I mean, Chris has talked in length about it, you know, he wouldn't do that, so.
I have one question, Mr. President, so in that case, every one of us up here would be having ethics violation, correct? Because we all, we all seven voted to appoint that person or people to the charter commission, correct?
If I may, that is correct. It, it, it passed two readings, and that is a, again, you're getting into these hypothetical interpretations of the ethics board. And if the ethics board does rule, that's a possible ruling. And so if that is in fact the case, and no ethics violation is found, then, based upon the city council appointing the charter commission as a whole, as opposed to one nomination made by one particular person, if the charter commission as a whole has to be established by ordinance, then which requires a majority vote of the city council. So yes, that's a, and again, it, it's very difficult to predict the actions of a board over which you have no input or no control. So you're dealing with it, but that is certainly a possible outcome of what you're saying.
So avoid the postman.
All right, Council, if there's no more questions.
On the table is an ordinance to repeal, adopting ordinance to repeal, ordinance number 154 of 2023, final reading.
All right, Council, please cast your vote.
Motion failed. New business, adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement to replace the gravity sewer main segment in between Boone Street and Gilbert Street that collapsed at a cost of $46,500 to come from Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ben, is that what they were doing last week out there? Okay, that, unless you got something great to tell, all right. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Ben, was this from any of the boring or anything they were doing? Or is this just a old, old gravity main that failed?
Old concrete, gravity main, eight years' concrete. We ended up having to pipe burst that and put new pipe in, it was underneath the house, pretty, pretty big mess, but it's.
They did it quick, though.
Yeah, we're, they, they got it done. It'd been that way a little too long, truthfully, but I think the mayor even got a nice love letter on that one, but it's all brand new now.
Thank you, man.
Oh, you're in love again?
Yeah.
All right. Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, to vote upon the adoption of amendments to the current city charter of the city of Bossier City, making application to the state bond commission and providing for other matters in connection therewith, first and final reading.
So moved. Your second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
David Crockett, 653, Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Boy, great discussion earlier about the importance of the charter. I guess the real question here is, does the charter really matter in this case? I'm gonna read the charter the way it reads in a second. Bossier City Council failed to pass the ordinance establishing term limits by the 30-day deadline, which was on August 8th. So verbatim, the charter reads, Bossier City Charter, Section 21.04, "If any amendment is proposed by the petition of the electors, the city council shall submit the same to the electors of the city at a special election to be called no less than 90 days, no more than 120 days after the receipt of the registrar's certificate of sufficiency, if authorized by the state, or if not, at the next date so authorized." So I know Bossier City Terms Limits, Term Limits Coalition Attorney has talked to Mr. Jacobs. The next available election date is the December election. The bond commission scheduled meeting for that election is August the 20th. So this resolution is required for you to get yourself on track, or you're voting to violate your own charter. So go back to every discussion that you had about a few minutes ago, about does the charter matter, or does it not? I mean, I know more people are probably wanting to comment about this, but we know what your constituents signed up for. They expected that when you didn't vote to pass it in 30 days, which no one ever really expected that you'd ever pass that. So, Mr. President, I would ask Mr. Jacobs to explain to you all in public, so we all know, you know, what his reading of the charter is. Is this resolution required by your charter? It is. I know you've talked to our. I know you've talked to our attorney. I think Mr. Hammond's comments earlier, no one wants additional lawsuits, but you are subjecting yourself to a lawsuit if this isn't passed. Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? Comments from the Counsel?
It's first, oh, she's going to speak?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm slow going.
That's all right. Just state your name and address.
Cassie Rogers, 4914 General Sterling Price Place. I'm not sure why we didn't strike this from the agenda or if this, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Does this only have to do with the current proposed amendments to the city Charter?
This is the petition. Am I not correct? Yes. The term limit petition.
Okay. Well, I ask you that. You vote in favor of it then.
Any other comments? Counsel, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, it's my appreciation that the mayor is in favor of term limits. You've said it more than once. I'm curious about something here. In the proposition, it says, "All terms to which a person has been elected prior to January 1st, 2024 shall be counted towards the limitation provided for herein." What is your, what's your thought on that particular line?
Originally, I thought of term limits as three terms. I, you know, the retroactivity got in there afterwards. So, on what you're meaning is, what is the meaning of what, the end of your term? What are the three terms or something? Is that what you're meaning?
You used the word retroactive, so are you, is that?
That's what, that's what they have in there.
Okay, so are you, are you in favor of that language, retroactive, to be part of this petition?
I believe in term limits, three term limits. Retroactivity could be, but I was, when I first started, it was just for three, for three terms, term limits. Retroactivity get put in there afterwards.
Okay, so if, if that wasn't part of this, you'd be more in favor of it than you are now?
I'm in favor of it now, yes, sir.
So, you are in term, you are in favor that it should be retroactive?
Term limits, yes, sir.
Retroactively?
Retroactive or just, or just term limits, yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear because that's, that's one thing that stands out to me. And let's see, I think, I want to know your opinion about this as well.
Good.
It also says that no person who has been elected to serve for three terms shall be eligible to be appointed or elected to an additional term. What's your interpretation of that?
That if they already been in there for three, three terms, that they cannot be elected again?
Mm-hmm.
Three terms is three terms. That's what, I mean, that's what, that's what I stated before.
So, so does that interpretation mean they can never run for office again?
I suppose so, yes, sir.
Oh, you in favor of that?
I said three terms. I think somebody deserves three terms as a councilman. That's saying they could run for some other, you know, other post or something like that, but that, and just the Counsel, yes.
Okay, you are in favor of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much.
Is there any other questions, Mr. Darby?
No. But I can say this, I do believe in term limits. I've, I've been on the Council and I ran in 1989. And I ran again in 1993 and I didn't win. I was termed out. So, I'm in favor of term limits. When those good people of District Two decide on term limits, I'm fully in favor of it. I am not in favor of the language in this petition. And I will not support it ever because it's, it's not that I feel it necessary to be eligible to run, but as a law-abiding citizen, as a taxpayer, I don't think 3,000 people should determine whether I should run for office or not. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that we should not have good government, but this does not, this is not a representation of good government. You know, people have honorably served and sacrificed to, to serve, and that's what we've done. And I believe this petition target only certain people in the first place. It doesn't, it doesn't address government at all. It targets certain people. So, I appreciate you giving your opinion about that.
You're welcome, sir. Well, I agree with Mr. Darby. I couldn't have said any better. I'm not going to. But I don't know, a young guy coming up wants to run, three terms, you know, he's still young. I don't know, I'm still old. And he can never run again. He may want to run for mayor next time. If you get on here and serve three terms and learn, learn the budget, learn what's going on inside the city, and this guy, a good guy, smart guy, now he wants to run for mayor and he can't do it. So, that's the retroactivity.
He can, he can run for mayor.
I thought you said any office.
No, you cannot run for.
Hey, whoa, whoa, whoa. I would ask if someone liked to speak, please come to the mic and state your name and address. Phyllis, hold, hold on, please, sir. Would you read again the decorum rules so that we make it clear the next time?
Any person wishing to address the Council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. You know, Mr. Crockett has already gave up his speak, I mean, his speaking time. So, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this and then he could come back?
Mr. President, I'm asking for your indulgence. David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City. I only spoke for about 45 seconds. I believe the issue here is that you're discussing whether you want term limits or not. You have a Charter that we complied with and we had a petition that was valid, that was legal. This isn't a vote about whether you support term limits or not. You have no choice according to your Charter. Mr. Jacobs, please read that. I mean, I think my attorney talked to you about that. Somebody needs to include that in the discussion.
We're the ones getting the vote.
Please, let me, let me just make my, okay. So, the point being that, yes, you can run for police jury. Yes, you can run for mayor, but you can't run for City Council after this. And your question about the retroactivity, I mean, I'd be glad to answer any questions. The reason that it says also partial terms is so that you wouldn't be appointed to fill somebody else's term if you've already served your three terms. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I'm the person who drafted it with the help of my attorney. So, if you want to ask me questions, please do. Use the public. This was all constructive. And some of the comments that were made on, by this dais, yes, 80% of the people in the country support term limits. So, it's really a question about what the people want, not you as City Councilmen want. We're not trying to denigrate what you've done in the past. I may disagree personally on past decisions by the Counsel. But I appreciate your, your honor and your dignity and all of those things. But this is what, it's not just 3,000 people. Those kind of comments, that does denigrate the, the people that signed the petition. I walked in every one of your district. I can tell you that there were hundreds of people in your district that signed the petition. Go look at them. You've got the petition. Mr., I mean, President, go talk to your people because your district was one of the biggest districts that wants term limits. The man sitting to the left of you, the same dag gum way. I'm just telling you, I went into your district too. Of course, I love your district. Everybody supports it in your district. This is for the people. This isn't for yourself. A vote, if you vote this down, you're inviting a lawsuit because you're in violation of your Charter. So, this is not about whether you support term limits. This is about whether you appreciate good governments that's defined in your Charter. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this up. I hope we keep this on the agenda like you did before if this doesn't pass. But either way, it might be resolved in court or whatever, but we're not going to sit back on this. Your citizens have invested too much in this. And we promised them that we're going to support this effort and they want it. So, thank you.
Counsel, any more questions? Yeah.
Mr. Jeter.
Mr., oh, go ahead, Mr. Jeter.
Lee A. Jeter, Senior, 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7/11/12. And Mr. Darby, Mr. Williams, Mr. President, this Counsel, I think we appreciate all of the work that this Counsel has done for the city of Bossier City. But I think for the people, the issue is if the Charter allows the people to make a petition to his government body and that petition is made legally to the government body to act upon a certain issue, regardless of what that issue is, that the government body at least has to take that issue before a majority of the people for a vote. No one is preconceiving that the citizens are going to vote for term limits because of the retroactive. They could vote it down. They don't necessarily have to vote for it, but the Charter allows the citizens of the city of Bossier to have a right to petition their body of government for an action and for that action to come before their entire electorate for the city of Bossier. And I think that's the overwhelming issue is because we, none of us want this to go to litigation. None, we all want this issue to be resolved, but it's only going to be resolved when the people have had their say on this issue. Otherwise, it's going to keep coming up. And I think this issue needs to be moved forward and put behind us so we can go ahead with the government of Bossier City and move forward on more pressing issues that this Counsel and this body has to do to make Bossier City to continue to be the great city that it is without, without any, without any concern for how the citizens may vote because they need to have their say. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Counsel, any more questions?
Mr. Jacobs, I have a few questions for you. The petition on its face, you've looked at it, correct?
I have.
And then, the, the petition that we got last year, you found a few flaws that raised red flags to you, which prompted us to get outside legal opinions.
That is correct.
With the petition you have in hand, do you notice any flaws that raise a red flag to you?
There, I don't see any defect in the form of the petition itself. The last issue, when it first came, the first effort failed to include the year of birth, which was, and that issue was actually decided, I believe it was Judge Gregg in District Court. And because of Louisiana Revised Statute 18:3, which states that a petition of this type must include the year of birth, then that petition was flawed, correct on its face. I see no such defect in the petition itself. And it leads me, if you wish me to continue.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you look at, and what I believe Colonel Crockett brought up, he stated the date of August 8th. And I'm going to give the same advice that I gave at the last meeting. Is that, to the best of my understanding or the best of my knowledge, and I'll let Ms. McGraw correct me if I'm wrong, this petition was properly presented to the City Council on June 25th.
June 25th, yes, sir.
So, I don't know where the, the August 8th date comes. The way that I read the Charter is this, that in Section 21.01B, that deals specifically with an amendment to the Charter by petition of the voters. And that section refers you to 5.01, which is the referendum incorporate, it's a referendum to present an ordinance to the Counsel, but 21.01B basically protrides the same process for an amendment to the Charter. What 5.01B says is that the City Council has 30 days once that that petition is presented to the Counsel, which would be on June 25th of 2024. I don't understand how 30 days has run from August 8th. If the City Council fails to pass the attached ordinance to the petition without alteration, then it must be presented to the voters. In order to be presented to the voters, it has to go before the Bond Commission. And then, if it's approved by the Bond Commission, the language in it, and it, it's mainly a logistical procedural process, not really a substantive process, then it goes to the Secretary.
Somebody's hacking my phone. Look at it. It's on silent. I didn't.
It's on silent.
Got to go.
Well, did it?
This is unbelievable.
But, so, and then it goes to the Secretary of State and then is properly put on a ballot. So, again, my opinion is the same as I gave, you know, in the, in the meeting prior there too. The City Council has 30 days to pass it, the ordinance, as attached. If not, then it gets, it gets put on the ballot. Again, my math is August 24th of 2024 is the expiration of the 30 days. So, again, I've discussed it with the Counsel. I've discussed it with the Mayor. I've discussed it ad nauseam with other attorneys and things of that nature. Mr. Crockett is correct. I have had one conversation with Mr. Garrett and my opinion has not changed. So, again, that's, that's the language in the Charter and that's the way that I read the Charter.
And it was brought up at the last Counsel meeting that if, if it wasn't passed without alteration, it'd go to the voters, which would have to go to the State Bond Commission. And the State Bond Commission requires this resolution for them to hear anything. So, procedurally, this, what we're voting on today is something that's required by the Bond Commission for them to even have an opportunity to hear this.
Correct. It's my understanding, and I do need to correct myself. I believe I said June 20, it was presented on June, it was presented on July of 25th of 2025. There's nothing in the Charter that says that the City Council has to wait the 30 days to, to pass without alteration. And so, what the Mayor has set forth is a resolution, sending it to the Bond Commission, which is my understanding from the Bond Commission is required to, the Bond Commission can't act without an official request from the city. That request comes in the form of the resolution from the City Council, which of course requires one reading.
And if the City Council disagrees with the petition, does the city Charter give us a, a way to just ignore it, vote against it, change it?
Well, if the City Council disagrees with the meat, with the language of the proposed amendment to the Charter, then, and they think that there is some type of legal flaw, you know, in the language or some other type of problem, then the City Council doesn't have to pass the resolution. Then, that would leave the ball in the Term Limits Coalition Court. They would file what's called a writ of mandamus to try to force the City Council to send it to it. Then, the City Council would present their defenses in court. Then, the judge would rule on that and it would take it from there.
Is a writ of mandamus a form of a lawsuit?
It is. It's, 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 it's an action to, to a public body to perform a non-discretionary function.
So, if we didn't vote on this and the Term Limits Coalition were to file this writ of mandamus, they, they would be filing a lawsuit against the city, correct?
That is correct.
So, by not voting on this, just like the ordinance two votes ago, we open ourselves up to possible litigation, so we should be on the safe side and just pass this, correct?
Well, the 30 days hasn't expired, so.
May I make an injection?
Mr. Crockett. You're not being called upon yet. There's conversation between Councilman Smith and our city attorney right now.
Okay.
There's no disrespect, man.
Mr. President.
But he has the floor.
I think you're the president. I just, the facts are wrong, the facts are wrong.
Mr. Williams.
Okay, Mr. Crockett, let our attorneys finish talking.
Okay.
You've already had it two times, but if you get another one.
I just want the facts to be known.
I'm wrapping up, Mr. Crockett, so just give me just a second. So, I just want to make sure we've gone over the petition, the, 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 the process of how we can do it, the fact that, you know, if we don't vote on this, we're opening ourselves up to possible litigation. The, the last thing I want to hit on is, does the petition in itself change the Charter or Bossier City law?
The petition does not.
The petition does not. The ordinance attached to it calls for a referendum on the November fifth ballot.
So, the, excuse me, Mr. Mag, I'm going to clarify this real quick. The three thousand five hundred eighty-two people who signed it, they're not changing Bossier City law, they're just giving the sixty-eight thousand people who live in Bossier City the opportunity to vote on this. Is that correct?
It goes to a local referendum, which is an election, right? And whoever chooses to vote or not vote, then will.
Which is the democratic process that we have in America.
Well, also in the charter.
In the charter, yeah. Okay. I'm done, thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to put some facts forward, and.
Just limit it.
Yeah, I will. Mr. Smith, were you looking at the certification of the registrar of voters? Is that what you just flipped to to get the number? Would you please look at the date on that, because that's the date that the petition, or the petition was turned into the city council? What was the date on?
July twenty-fifth.
July twenty-fifth. Oh, I thought it was.
Yes, sir.
Is that the certificate?
Yes, sir.
That's what I have.
Mr. Crockett, Mr. Smith is not going to tell you something that's not true, okay? So, we're waiting on you. See if you can wrap it up in about thirty seconds, okay?
So, basically, I see what you're saying. You have thirty days from that point to act on it, if not pass, you have to pass the resolution in time to get on the next election. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that has to be presented to the bond commission. The, the attached ordinance then has to be presented to the bond commission. The bond commission is who requires the resolution to put it on the ballot. And, but the ordinance that's attached to the petition must be submitted to the bond commission without alteration.
But it has to be submitted in time for them to get it on the next available election within one hundred and twenty days. So, that's my, kind of my point, is that if you don't pass it in this meeting, you can't go two more weeks until your next meeting and meet, and comply, so we would have to file a lawsuit to force you to do it, to meet it within that timeline, to meet the bond commission date.
Therein lies the conflict between the bond commission's imposed deadlines and the charter requirements. And again, but that, but you, what, what you're essentially asking to do, and again, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, is the charter prescribes a delay for the city council to consider. If the city council so considers it, they can call a special meeting, you know, to do that, but the charter prescribes a thirty-day in section five point zero one to allow the city council time to consider it and pass it without veto. If the city council fails to consider it or fails to take action, then it has to be presented, it has to be put on the ballot. In order in the state of Louisiana to be put on the ballot, this type of election has to be, has to go through the bond commission, then to the Secretary of State's office, and those delays that are set, that August twentieth delay, a date, is set by the bond commission, if I'm not, well, I'm not mistaken, is set by the bond commission, not in the charter.
That's correct. It's an August twentieth date, but still, it may be able to get on the ballot, so it needs to be submitted as soon as possible. Thank you, and I appreciate it, Mr. President, I really do.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jacobs, was there any other attorneys asked for opinions on this resolution?
On this, on, on the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Not that I'm aware of.
No other, opinions asked by any other, on other attorneys to, about this one?
There wasn't a, I believe the council was sought an outside opinion with Mr. Andrew Cobb on the Charter Commission, and, and the legality or the validity of repealing by ordinance.
Okay.
But not specifically on this resolution. Again, I would say, Mr. Mayor, that the city council does not have to take advantage of the thirty-day period, which is prescribed in the charter, that if they were to pass the resolution today, then it would go to the bond commission, and then, and, you know, and then it would be, go through that process and be put on the next available ballot pursuant to those delays.
Ms. Cassie?
Cassie Rogers, forty-nine fourteen, General Sterling Price Place. We talked about the, or you guys talked about the Charter Commission, and how important it was to keep it as it is, and so that we don't come into any legal issues, but in case some have forgotten and/or aren't realizing, there were actually three different versions given to the Charter Commission, and they voted on this version. So, not only would have this been in or on the ballot had everything went through, but it was going to be this exact version too. So, it was still going to go to the people. So, if you don't do it for the citizens of Bossier City, maybe we do it for the Charter Commission, so that that can come off of their plate, so that they can get to the business that you guys are asking them to get to, because they won't get to it if this doesn't go on the ballot. Thank you.
All right, counsel. Any more questions?
I have a motion by Mr. Hammond, and a second by Mr. Smith to approve the resolution.
All right, counsel, please cast your vote. All of it.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city of Bossier City to prepare and submit an application to the statewide flood control program for assistance in the implementation of a project for the purpose of reducing existing flood damage, providing for the necessary documentation of said flood damages. Furthermore, this resolution, resolution will designate Amanda Nottingham as the authorized project signing to submit remaining contract documents on behalf of the city for both the application and the grant funding documents. It's so awarded first and final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, did yours pop up?
It just popped. My, my computer is.
I'll get IT to look at it.
Like my phone.
Yeah, it's.
There's ghosts down there, that's what it is.
Parade permit fee waiver for the Christ the King parade.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience on this issue? Counsel, please cast your vote. Shit, I can't do nothing. There it goes.
adopted resolution to change the name of City Hall Drive to Hutchinson Drive. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience on this issue? I think the police chief explained it. Question from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote. Do we have any reports today? Any announcements? All right, you can adjourn.